Welcome to the candidate form for Golden Valley Mayor and two seats on the Golden Valley City Council. My name is Jackie Wells and I'm the Voter Service Chair of the League of Women Voters of Golden Valley. On behalf of our league, I welcome the candidates, our audience members here, and those viewing from home. We are holding this forum tonight for voters to meet the candidates and to compare and contrast their ideas. The rules and procedures for tonight's forum are in the program and were communicated to the candidates. The League of Women Voters Minnesota is a 104-year-old nonpartisan organization that encourages its members and all people to be involved in the political process. We encourage informed and active participation in government and welcome all who are interested in learning about a variety of issues to join our organization. The League of Women Voters Minnesota and its local leagues conduct candidate forums to provide the public with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss the issues that are important to members of the public. The league is a nonpartisan organization that does not support or oppose any political party or candidate. The views expressed in each forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters. LWV Minnesota and its local leagues post complete, unedited recordings of forums. Editing is authorized only for official media reporting. Excerpts or edited clips of candidate forums may not be used for partisan or political purposes. Tonight's forum is being recorded by CCX Media Northwest Community Television. We ask our live audience to please quietly listen to the forum and to silence their phones. The video recording will be posted at CCXMedia.org and our league Facebook page in the next few days. Golden Valley has a statutory Plan B form of government, also known as the Council Manager Plan. It consists of the elected mayor, four elected city council members, and a full-time city manager. The city council appoints the city manager and sets the direction policies and ordinances for the city with input from residents and recommendations from city commissions and staff. The city manager is the chief administrative executive who oversees implementation of council policies and directives. On Election Day, Tuesday, November 7, Golden Valley voters will vote for two council member seats for four-year terms, for which there are three candidates, and one mayor for a four-year term, for which there are two candidates. I am now very pleased to introduce Peggy Kfang, who will be our moderator tonight. She is a member of the League of Women Voters of Minnetonka Eden Prairie Hopkins. Thank you so much, Peggy, for volunteering to moderate this forum. Please join me in welcoming Peggy to our forum.
Tonight's forum has two parts. The first is for Golden Valley City Mayor and will last for approximately 30 minutes, followed by a brief break, and then we will hear from the candidates for Golden Valley City Council. The candidates are seated in alphabetical order, and they will take turns being first to answer the questions. The format begins with opening statements to the questions sent to the candidates in advance. That will be followed by written questions from the audience. Finally, there will be one-minute closing statements. Audience members may raise your hand to request a question card or to turn one into a league usher. We also accepted questions at the Golden Valley League's email. We will ask as many questions as time allows, consolidating by issue if necessary, by league volunteers at the question sorting table, and all candidates will be given the opportunity to answer each question. The choice of questions will be made by me in a good-faith effort to reflect the interests expressed by the audience. Please remember that while respectful disagreement with a candidate's position is fine, personal attacks are not allowed. If your questions were not answered, please talk with the candidates after the forum. The candidates for Golden Valley Mayor are Rosalynn Harmon and Jillian Rosenquist. Please join me in welcoming them. We have timekeepers, so that each candidate has the same amount of time to respond to the questions. The timekeeper will hold up a card when there are 15 seconds remaining and a stop card when your time is up. We ask that you finish your sentence and stop at that point. The opening question is, why are you running for Golden Valley Mayor and what are your qualifications? You will each have two minutes to respond, and the first candidate to speak is Rosalynn Harmon.
Thank you. I'm Rosalynn Harmon, candidate for Golden Valley Mayor. First, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this event and to community present, thank you for taking the time to be here. To all candidates campaigning, this is no easy feat, and I appreciate all of you for coming and committing to serve our city. Friends, our community faces challenges and deeply rooted issues that need to be addressed for us to elevate as well as prosper. I'm running because as a resident who has lived in Golden Valley for 30 years, only 10 years ago, I didn't feel included to call Golden Valley my home until my mother was laid off, caught in the web of foreclosure where the bank was working with us yet sold and bought our home during the process. All of this with a Molotov cocktail at the end of our driveway. Within 24 hours, the mayor, about 100 Golden Valley residents, and multiple housing organizations showed up on our front lawn advocating. For months, we collaborated with great folks like Representative Mike Freiberg, who then helped pass a bill making this unethical practice called dual-tracking illegal in the state of Minnesota. Community supported us. It was at that pivotal moment that we felt Golden Valley was truly our home. I'm running to empower residents to visualize an innovative and welcoming city that embraces everyone. We need change. I'm a nonprofit executive director with seven years of holding key positions both within the community and at City Hall. I'm vice chair of our Peace Commission and help spearhead Sweet Potato Comfort Pie, a catalyst for building and caring community. Together with council, city staff, and your active involvement, we can achieve better transparency, affordable housing options, public safety initiatives, preserving our environment, and supporting our local businesses. Thank you so much for having me here.
Thank you. Audience, I'll ask that you hold your applause now to the end of the forum so that we can get as many questions in as possible. Thank you. Next, Jillian Rosenquist.
Thank you very much. As mayor of Golden Valley, I'll be ready on day one to move us forward together. I believe that government is a way as we as a community come together for the common good. My love of community and public service is at the heart of everything I do. Shortly after buying our home here in Golden Valley 21 years ago, I jumped into connecting with neighbors and building community. I'm a familiar face at Metta Brook School, Market in the Valley, and Prism because my family and I put in the time to create the home we wish to live in. I have served on the city council for almost six years. Before that, I was on the Open Space and Recreation Commission. My background is as a lawyer, nonprofit program manager, and well as the mother of three. I'm a responsive and engaged council member. I meet often with folks to hear their concerns and perspectives. I've answered questions at grocery stores, on walks, and even in the halls of the state legislature. As a leader, I've partnered with other agencies to bring important things to Golden Valley, such as a future bus rapid transit line, millions of dollars in park and water quality improvements, bike trails and safer streets. I'm strategic and practical. I've learned a lot about government and topics ranging from commercial zoning to cannabis in order to do this job well. There's a lot of important work going on in Golden Valley, and I'm proud of how this council and I have advanced short- and long-term goals, investments, and improvements. We are rebuilding a community-based police department and making important environmental progress. Experienced leadership is essential to get results. The mayor sets a tone for the city council. If I become mayor, I can assure you that our council will be collaborative and respectful. Public service can be challenging, but I found real joy in service. I have more than a decade of city experience and a track record as a forward-thinking, community-centered leader. I hope to have earned your support and vote for the next mayor of Golden Valley. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we move to the questions from the voters. Candidates will have up to one and one-half minutes to answer these questions, and we will begin with Jillian Rosenquist. So the first question is, we have received many questions on affordable housing, including the new homeownership program for equity. Please discuss your perspective on how the city should or should not assist in creating more affordable housing.
Well, I'm really proud that during my tenure on council, we activated our Housing and Redevelopment Authority so that we have a full-time housing and economic development manager to focus on these really important issues. We also are very engaged with a local group called the Suburban Housing Coalition that really works with our local nonprofit service agency Prism to let us know what the problems are in the community and what they see the needs are. With their assistance and community involvement, the council has moved forward on a lot of critical renter protections, and we've also been able to have our first building going up that is under our new policy that requires a certain amount of affordable units. And we're proud that the 42 affordable units will be going into a building in downtown Golden Valley very shortly. I think that also the homeownership to promote equity program is a really important program. We know through our work as part of the Just Deeds Coalition, our history as a community that was very intentionally built to exclude others out and making sure that we can invite them in so in a way that they have single-family ownership and they're able to build wealth and generational wealth and equity is something I'm really proud and hope to continue as your mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Rosalynn Harmon.
Yes, affordable housing is really important. It's not only to have affordable housing, but we need to be able to attain it. It's important that we are staying in our homes. We'll talk about taxes, I'm sure, later, but we need our seniors not only to have a place to transition to, but our younger folks who are wanting to start homes, they need to be able to feel comfortable financially to do that here in Golden Valley. We have apartments that are entirely too expensive, so I am very happy that we have some apartments that are going up, which will have some affordable homes, although I don't think it's enough, right? When we're talking about 300 units with only 40 homes being affordable. And as we talk about affordability, that does not necessarily mean that people are of color or come from backgrounds of crime. And so I really want to make sure that when we say affordable homes and that we're putting people in affordable homes, that we're being equitable, meaning that they are in the same home that someone who is paying a higher rent has access to. We don't want to stuff them in an apartment or an area that is less than. So it's very important. Is that for us or? Okay. So that just took some time, I'm sorry. So like Jillian said, we do have the Just Deeds Coalition, Mapping Prejudice, Minnesota Home Ownership Alliance, and we want to educate especially our younger people to be first-time home buyers. The Minneapolis area realtors have lots of education for us to be able to provide those services.
Thank you. Our next question will begin with Rosalynn Harmon. Question is, what suggestions, if any, do you have for Golden Valley's public safety?
So I am vice chair of the Peace Commission, which is the police relations commission that works closely with our police department. And I can tell you that as vice chair, we work in the three areas of recruitment, data, and community engagement. And I've sat on interviews, and we are building our police department. We want to ensure that our city is safe, and we want to keep it that way. I think Chief Green is doing a fabulous job, as well as our assistant chiefs Perez and Alice White. It's very important to build relationship, and so we need to build relationship, but also we need data on behalf of our crime stats, which includes criminal calls, what's happening in terms of accountability, and we want to see some outcomes. We have a neighborhood watch, which needs to turn to a neighborhood welcome. And so we have 800 block leaders, and I want to make sure that they're trained in restorative practices. And restorative practices is meant to build relationships and to prevent crime. And yeah, we have great people, mayors, legislatures, Cedric Frazier, Representative Frazier, who can help us and to collaborate on these efforts to make sure that our police department is equitable and safe.
Thank you. Jillian Rosenquist.
Thank you very much. During the pandemic, I was the chair of the Police Community Commission that formed the Peace Commission, and so I'm really proud of the work that they're doing to really make this public safety discussion and reforms very community-centered and based. I share the confidence in our leadership. We have all of our key leadership positions in place, and they are doing a really important job in both innovative outreach, the Chat with the Chief program is being welcomed by neighborhoods across the community, as well as recruitment. There's work being done, again, externally with community engagement and internally to make sure that processes and all kinds of procedures are being improved so we can deliver the best public safety on your behalf. Also, we're really proud that we have a full-time social worker as part of our public safety team, and I think that's really important to help our folks respond to what we know are seeing, our increasing mental health and other kinds of issues and responses. I'm also excited about the fact that the city has brought in a new team, a new prosecution firm, that is going to be working a lot in restorative and diversionary tactics for folks who have parking, petty misdemeanor, misdemeanor violations.
Thank you. A new topic, and we'll begin with Jillian Rosenquist. This is on climate change. What is your vision for addressing climate change, both prevention and resiliency to survive increasingly volatile impacts?
Thank you very much for that question. This is another area where I think Golden Valley is a real leader. We're a Green Step Five city and one of the few cities in Minnesota that have reached that level. We also engage with Xcel Energy to create an energy action plan, and we added an extra staff member to help roll that out. And that is really important. We're working with residents, teaching them to both bring energy savings for an environmental reason and also to reduce cost burden on them. We've got a new Energy Hero program where we work with businesses to also reduce their energy use. We're rolling out solar panels, and a lot of the work we're doing in a very wet Golden Valley and given our rain incidences and flood mitigation. The multi-year Dakota ponds and the last bit that you're seeing in the Wildwood Park construction has been a really important project for not just Golden Valley, but that entire region. And we are also working with the Bassett Creek Watershed Commission on really important water quality and flood mitigation projects. So I know our team is also working to expand electric vehicle infrastructure throughout the city, educate folks. You see them at the farmer's market and things like that. I'm really excited at how we're working with the Environmental Commission to roll out really important things on this front.
Thank you. Rosalynn Harmon.
I first want to give honor to the Dakota because Golden Valley is actually on Dakota wetlands. And so it's important that we preserve what we have, which are our trees, our beauty, because our biodiversity is very, very important to a lot of residents here in Golden Valley, including myself. As Jillian mentioned, we do have a partnership in energy, which is PI. We have the Green Step Five program, which is the metric system. But I also want to make sure that Golden Valley, are we doing enough on behalf of climate change? We need to continue to have joint agreements like we do with Crystal and New Hope on behalf of our water. We need to, I'm happy that we're sharing resources in terms of pools and other things, but we really need to partner and collaborate with our surrounding communities in order to do more on behalf of our residents. I know that Jillian mentioned about electric fleets. I know that Larry Fonnas, who was a councilman years ago, had brought that up in terms of having electrical fleets and what happened with that. So I really want to make sure that we're on top of what we say that we're going to do and follow through because our environment is very important to keep our green spaces safe and healthy.
Thank you. For our next question, we'll begin with Rosalynn Harmon. If proposed projects in the citywide referenda are passed, the local city sales tax of 1.25% will go into effect. However, if bonding is not approved by referenda, how would you prioritize the unfunded projects?
So I think when it comes to taxes, Golden Valley, we're a little bit traumatized with that word, tax. When we hear tax, it's like, ah! Because in the four years, we've had a 30% increase. That's very, very high. For the local sales tax, if we really, really research it and take a look at it, it's 1.25%. And I know that there's residents who are for it as well as against it. But I had the opportunity of visiting the local fire department, and it needs infrastructure support. We have firefighters who are, you know, they need to answer the call, respond to the call. But most importantly, with having this local sales tax, it will produce them to be safe in terms of having proper HVAC that not only blows diesel out, but it's blowing onto them and their bodies and their gear, and we need to be able to support them because there are some carcinogens that are blowing out. We already have two officers, unfortunately, who have been diagnosed with cancer, and so until we can get real, concrete data on what's happening, I support the local sales tax, and I think that we need to do all that we can to make sure that our police infrastructure and our fire department is good.
Thank you. Jillian Rosenquist.
Thank you. The other task force that I chaired during the pandemic was the Municipal Facilities Task Force, and I see a number of members of that task force in the audience tonight. It was a really important and comprehensive study of our municipal facilities, and after COVID regulations kind of eased a little bit, we were able to tour some of the facilities, new facilities in Fridley, and really see the profound difference between a new facility and the old facilities that we have here in terms of safety for our workers, efficiency, the capacity to manage equipment and deal with that kind of thing. And so I do support the 1.25 local sales tax option as the best way to provide those services. About 62% of those local sales taxes will be paid by people who don't live in the city currently. They are part of the 33,000 people that come into the city every day to work or visit. And given that they use our public safety and public works services, I think that is a fair way to spread the cost burden. And in terms of the other part of the question, which one I prioritize, we do need to consolidate the public works facilities to be able to do the other elements of this plan, and it's all in the municipal facility study that you can see online on our website.
Thank you. I have a lot of questions, and we're half done already, so I'm going to cut back to one minute for your answers. These are not as complicated as the other ones, so I think we can do it, but that way we can cover more questions. So the next question will start with Jillian Rosenquist, and it's one minute. What does DEI mean to you in the context of city operations?
Sure. Thank you. DEI stands for diversity, equity, inclusion. And to me, that represents a growth mindset of the entire city to strive to do better, to be a city that is more welcoming, inclusive, understanding, and really providing the services that are individualized and needed by every single one of our residents.
Thank you. Rosalynn Harmon.
DEI, and I want to be very clear, it's not about just race. DEI, diversity, is about all voices, ages, social, economic status, and working together. E is for equity, which means fairness. And, you know, we really want to make sure that Golden Valley is equitable all across the board, that everyone has the same opportunities. I stands for inclusion, which means building relationships, coming together. So with DEI efforts for Golden Valley, we need to have diversity in our staff, we need to diversify who we work with, and we need people who work here to look like those who we serve and who live in this community.
Thank you. Our next question will begin with Rosalynn Harmon. The city recently contracted for professional services in prosecuting some misdemeanors. What changes are expected with this new prosecutorial service, and what is your perspective on how the city prosecutes misdemeanors?
This is the work that I do full-time with Dispute Resolution Center. We do restorative justice and diversion work, and so I'm very excited that the city is looking into prosecution efforts. When a young person especially commits a crime, whether it's a misdemeanor, pretty much a misdemeanor, which is a fight, damage of property, car theft, for example, we want to support them. So instead of locking them up and throwing away the key, we're saying, hey, let's support you, let's give you the best opportunity possible to make sure that you don't get these major charges. And so I am in favor of our city attorney working on behalf of the city to provide that support.
Thank you. Jillian Rosenquist.
Yes, I referenced this earlier in a question. I'm really excited about the opportunity to work with this team. This firm has been working in Dakota and Anoka Counties, doing a lot of really important and interesting work to make sure that their approaches to dealing with, again, parking violations, petty misdemeanors and misdemeanors is something that ultimately produces good outcomes and satisfying outcomes, not just for the people that were wronged, but also for the people who are in these situations, understanding that mistakes don't have to be life sentences, that you can do things, diversionary work and other kinds of programs that will reduce recidivism, recommission of crimes, and have good outcomes.
Thank you. Our next question will be for Jillian Rosenquist first. How do you think the city can better communicate with and involve residents?
Thank you. Well, this is something that the city is always striving to do better. When I joined the council six years ago, the city wasn't on any form of social media and didn't, just had kind of a general email you could subscribe to to get an agenda for commission or something like that, and had its regular newsletter. And I'm proud to say that we increased the staff of the communications department, and now we've got interactive testimony at the planning commission, we have hybrid meetings here at the council, we have all forms of social media, the police and fire departments have their own channels of communication, as does Brookview Golden Valley. But of course, we always need to be innovating to make sure that we meet folks where they are and they're getting the information they need in a timely manner.
Thank you. Rosalynn Harmon.
Yes, I'm a people person, and so as mayor, it's very important to hear the concerns of the people. And that means you have to go to them because a lot of times, people are not going to come to you, to us, right? This can be a scary process when we're talking about government. And so it's very important that we come to the people and see about them, what are their needs. We need to hold some town hall forums. I am very concerned about a lot of the things that have been happening to Golden Valley, and we have not gotten community voice. Community voice is very, very important when it comes to leadership in government. So having more town hall forums, as well as community coming together and sharing is very important, and we need to do more and we need to do it better.
Thank you. Next question will start with Rosalynn Harmon. What changes, if any, in policy or actions would you suggest the city council make if you are elected or reelected?
I think, well, there's a few things, but we need to figure out our hiring better. I think we can clean up our process in terms of hiring, as well as exiting and onboarding. My vision for Golden Valley, I do have a seven-step plan of strong communication, enhancing accountability, reducing crime, having more inclusivity and equity, improving citizen-government relationships, building positive schools and workplaces, and long-term systemic change. And all of that includes building relationship. I cannot emphasize that enough. We have to work together and come together on behalf of Golden Valley.
Thank you. Jillian Rosenquist.
Well, thank you. Given that I've been part of the council for six years now, I think that we are working on the things that I really think we should be working on, but there are some things that I've been pushing for, and I'll highlight one of them is the focus on what I call livability issues. I've been really influenced by the thought that you really need to notice where people are struggling and start small and see what you can do on that level. So looking at problem intersections, looking at things in people's day-to-day lives that we as a city government can do and hopefully do efficiently and quickly to make those things better. I think we're doing a great job at looking at very long-range, big projects, and I'd like us to also be able to look small and see if we can do small targeted projects that make- that make everyday lives better.
Thank you. Next question will start with Jillian Rosenquist. What do you see as the most important infrastructure needs for Golden Valley and why? And how do you suggest paying for these needs?
Yeah, that is the challenge of an aging community, a community that was built mostly in the 1960s. And the, as you've noticed, water main, we have water main problems. We have all kinds of problems with our aging infrastructure. And we have an infrastructure renewal program that is due to start about a year after the completion of the pavement management program. And we will be going through the city as systemically as we did with the pavement management program to replace our aging infrastructure. That's, it's going to be a long haul, but it's one of the core services of government, and it's essential that we do it and prioritize it.
Thank you. Rosalyn Harmon.
I think we need to get creative, think outside of the box. We need to really look to our locals. We have smart residents in Golden Valley who can help advise and consult us with infrastructure. I think also when we talk about naming buildings and parks and benches, right? We can come together and donate, use our dollars to donate towards efforts to help build in Golden Valley. A lot of small towns do that, and I don't see why Golden Valley can't. That will help us save money as well. And so at the end of the day, it's really about how are we spending our dollars? And what can we do to get creative, to bring forth change where it's not putting us further in debt?
Thank you. I think we have time for two more questions. So this one's going to be hard to do in a minute. We're going to start with Rosalyn Harmon.
Promise to hear it easier.
What suggestions do you have for the city's budget in order to minimize property tax increases?
Oh, wow. We need to have some budget transparency in the front end, and we can't wait until the decision has been made. We really have to have community be a part of the discussion upfront. I think, as I said, four years, 30% tax levy, that's insane. Because if we want to keep our seniors in their homes, there are some people, hey, that can afford it, but there's other people who are having a difficult time. And then when we talk about young folks who want to move into our city, we want to make sure that they can afford it, as well as younger people who want to take over their parents' home. So we need to be smarter and think better in terms of the people and in terms of keeping our money intact, budget.
Thank you. Jillian Rosenquist.
Thank you very much. The city budget is always a very complicated topic, but it's how we get the money to pay for the really important services that we deliver for the residents of Golden Valley. Last year, I was the lone vote against the 11.2 levy increase because it was about double what our comparable population cities had last year. And I'm glad to say that we are in the right direction, and the proposed levy increase this year is 6.5. Again, it's a balancing. The budget is a value statement. If we want to do diversity, equity, inclusion work, if we want to do restorative justice, if we want to do ambitious things like that, we need staff. If we want to have the peace commission, we need a dedicated staff person. If we want to do communications, we need dedicated staff people. It's a balancing act, and it is a long conversation with the public that we have all fall. And I will continue to work hard to keep it reasonable.
Thank you. Next question, it's hard to figure out how to state this, so I'll just read it as written. What is your plan to incorporate into city commissions and committees those who think differently than you do? And we will start with, oh, did I forget you for the previous question?
No.
Okay, we'll start with Jillian Rosenquist.
Thank you. Well, I certainly think that on our boards and commissions right now, there are a diversity of opinions. I know when we created the peace commission, we very intentionally made very specific categories to make that as diverse as possible. And we're really looking forward to a time when our Golden Valley Police Department is fully staffed and we can have two representatives back on that commission for those robust discussions. I certainly welcome all diverse opinions. And regularly, we'll go to Devani's party room or the meeting room at Byerly's and listen to folks. The doors have had a lot of tough conversations where we just have to agree to disagree. And that's a really important and ongoing conversation, and I do feel it's represented on our boards and commissions.
Thank you. Rosalyn Harmon.
I say this in the most respectful way, but I think our council has dropped the ball in terms of not allowing voices to come into commission. Commissioners are interviewed, and I believe that, you know, we've become a little left-sided in terms of really representing, having all voices come to the table. There have been people who have been shut out of the process. There have been people who have received letters saying, thank you, but no, thank you. And we need to be fair. We need to be equitable. For me, it's important that we don't all sound the same. We don't all think the same. We cannot create change if we all think the same. So to have even diverse, you know, political parties to come in, different voices, we need that in order to be stronger and to build. We need that. We need that communication going back and forth. And so we have to do better with that, to bring all voices to the table.
Thank you. And this is the last question. We'll start with Rosalyn Harmon. What are your top three priorities over the next four years?
Top three priorities, making sure our city is safe with our police and fire departments, making sure that we truly have affordable and attainable homes, right? And lastly, we need to really mend this community divide so we can have a vibrant city, so we can work together on behalf of Golden Valley and be the heart that the city truly deserves to be.
Thank you. Jillian Rosenquist.
Thank you. The three priorities I have, again, are to rebuild our Golden Valley Police Department to make sure it's fully staffed. And we can do that hand-in-hand with transforming the department and doing better and better work. It's not just the police department, but the entire city that's really striving all the time to be a better organization and service provider for residents. As I mentioned, fiscal moderation and a balance between our ambitions and the economic realities and burdens on our taxpayers is always an important consideration. And I want to set the foundation for a successful future for Golden Valley. Doing the municipal facilities, doing our infrastructure work, providing those really important core services, and making sure we don't pass the buck on a future generation. And that responsibility to lay a vibrant future for our community is really important to me.
Thank you. It's now time for closing statements, and each of you have one minute to conclude, beginning with Jillian Rosenquist.
Great. Thank you very much. I'd like to thank you all for being part of this forum. I share your love of Golden Valley and interest in good government. It's why I've been a member of this chapter of the League of Women Voters for over a decade. I want to thank you to the league members and Peggy for their time and service putting on tonight's forum. I hope you found it insightful, and will look at my website, jillianrosenquist.com, and on social media for more information about me, my work, and ideas. With my experience and skills to guide us, I'm confident there's a vibrant future for the place we call home. I'm here to serve you as mayor, and we come together to improve Golden Valley for the common good. Thank you.
Thank you. Rosalyn Harmon.
Thank you again for allowing me to share my vision. After tonight, you all have some decisions to make, but let me leave you with this. I am qualified. My life's journey has unknowingly, to me, prepared me for this moment. All of this is a learning experience, and it's going to be hard work. We need to stop talking and start doing. We will not always have the answers, and you may not like me. But know that as your mayor, I will be committed to bringing transparency, accountability, and collective voice to this council. I also will commit to working together on behalf of keeping residents in their homes, ensuring our city is safe, keeping our natural resources preserved, supporting our local businesses, and making sure our children can grow up in a city that welcomes everyone. I leave you with this challenge. I challenge you to reach out, share your concerns, fight for change, embrace new opportunities, and vote. To explore my vision and passion for our city, visit rosalynforgv.com. It's time for change.
Thank you. Thank you to the candidates, the audience here and at home, and CCX Media Northwest Community Television for recording this forum. We will take a brief break and then hear from the Golden Valley City Council candidates. Please join me in thanking the mayor candidates for attending the forum and answering your questions. After a short break, we will continue with the city council candidate forum. We will now hear from the candidates for Golden Valley City Council. As a reminder, the rules and procedures for tonight's forum are in the program and were communicated to the candidates. Please raise your hand to request a question card or to turn one into a league usher. We also accepted questions at the Golden Valley League's email. We will ask as many questions as time allows, consolidating by issue if necessary, by league volunteers at the question sorting table. And all candidates will be given the opportunity to answer each question. The choice of questions will be made by me in a good-faith effort to reflect the interests expressed by this audience. Please remember that while respectful disagreement with a candidate's position is fine, personal attacks are not allowed. If your questions were not answered, please talk with the candidates after the forum. The candidates are Sophia Guinness, Maurice Harris, and Jean Kidd. Please join me in welcoming them. We have timekeepers so that each candidate has the same amount of time to respond to the questions. The timekeeper will hold up a card when there are 15 seconds left and a stop card when your time is up. We ask that you finish your sentence and stop at that point. The opening question is, why are you running for Golden Valley City Council and what are your qualifications? You will each have two minutes to respond, and the first candidate to speak is Sophia Guinness.
I'm Sophia Guinness, and I'm running because I believe in a welcoming, sustainable, and secure Golden Valley. I want our city to remain strong, and that means making decisions today that benefit us in years to come. And that matters to me because after building my house here, I plan to be here 30 years from now, if not longer. I bring energy and experience to tackle the needs of our city. Golden Valley deserves resilient and sustainable infrastructure, inclusive community safety, vibrant housing choice, exceptional parks and trails, and outstanding downtown. I have almost 20 years of community affair experience, and I'm a seasoned public sector leader. I work at Metro Transit, and my team conducts engagement to advance transit projects, improve public safety, and solve issues with community. I love what I do, and I want to continue to enhance transit regionally. My experience at work also lets me see what's working well across the region and other states as I collaborate with peers, which is current knowledge that I can bring back to Golden Valley. At work, I have voluntarily taken on complex and challenging projects. When I decide to do something, I commit. To help save the Blue Line extension, I attended over 300 community meetings in one year. To say I'm passionate about this kind of work is an understatement. If you want a candidate, a council member, that shows up, that works hard, that wants to hear from people, then I'm your candidate. I began volunteering in the city as soon as I moved here in 2019. I served on the planning commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals. I'm involved in my family's sports and activities. My experience has also shaped my values and rooted me deeply in community. I grew up in a family of immigrants and schoolteachers, and I've committed my life to the common good. I was originally appointed to the city council, and I hope tonight I gain your support to serve for four more years.
Thank you. Maurice Harris.
Thank you so much to Peggy for moderating it and for everyone to be here in attendance. I really appreciate to hear all of us speak. Thanks, Maurice Harris. I am the current city council member on the Golden Valley City Council, finishing out my first term. The reason I'm running for reelection is that's the place that I love. Moving here in 2016, being a part of this community and enjoying all the benefits that it is, I want to see this place prosper long after I died, essentially, because this is an amazing community. And to focus on the issues of infrastructure and affordable housing, and ensuring that our parks and trails are great, and ensuring that the city can be vibrant long in the future. My background, I'm a research manager at Transwestern Real Estate. It's a commercial real estate firm in Minneapolis. I'm a data person at heart, where I look at information and try to make good decisions for our team. And previously, I was a research manager at Greater MSP Partnership, the regional economic development organization. So looking at this region as a whole and seeing what makes this great, what does make this place go. And that includes ensuring that we have good schools, good education, good housing, good backbones that make communities really grow and thrive. My time on council has been an interesting four years, going through a pandemic, George Floyd, and those challenges kind of makes a show what we need to do to continue to drive and be better. And so hopefully, if the voters choose to have me for another four years, continue to work within affordable housing, on infrastructure, and ensuring public safety is vital. So thank you so much, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Jean Kidd.
I'd like to thank the league for having this forum. My name is Jean Kidd. I moved to the city of Golden Valley in 2014. Prior to that, I lived across the street on Xerxes for almost 30 years in North Minneapolis. We built a home here that we could age out in. What brought me here to this forum and to this process, which I want to thank everyone who participates in it, it is a daunting process to participate in, is that my concern for public safety. I wasn't, I guess I was kind of not paying attention till all of a sudden it was like the sheriff's department came in to start policing our city, and I was concerned by that. I couldn't figure out what happened. What happened to our police department? We had a 30-plus-member department, and all of a sudden, we didn't have one, that we couldn't staff our own city. And that was very concerning to me. I worked with the sheriff's department, the police department, the city for 28 years. I'm comfortable with them, but it was concerning to me that we had lost our police department. And then on top of that, quickly on the heels of that, was this issue of proposing this tax for $105 million public improvement plan, and I was concerned by that. I was like, we're a city of 23,000 people. How is this happening? What happened to our city? I had lived here for a few years, and government, when it runs well, you don't pay much attention to it. When it starts to have issues is when people are drawn into it. So for me, I would like, I'm a strategic planner at heart. I like good planning, training, and I'm hoping that I have an opportunity to bring that skill set to the council and try and create a cohesive plan forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a note passed me that we should all speak louder, so we'll all use our outdoor voices. Next, we will move on to the questions from the voters. The candidates will have up to one and one-half minutes to answer these questions, and you will be asked to respond in a randomized order. So for our first question, we will start with Jean Kidd. The question is, the city is considering the creation of neighborhoods in Golden Valley and has charged the planning commission with examining the requirements to do so. What is your view of this potential city initiative, Jean Kidd?
Naming the neighborhoods?
Creation, it says creation is the question.
Of neighborhoods. Well, North Minneapolis had a lot of specific-named neighborhoods. Homewood, Jordan, that all had a specific flair. Granted, maybe not interesting beginnings why they were created in the first place, but people did take pride in the communities. And if the thrust of that is to create an identity in specific parts of the city, I think people like that. I think it's something they can buy into. It kind of reduces your neighborhood down to something more manageable than a large city where you may never meet anybody on the other side of the city. I've enjoyed the hanging of door knockers and visiting parts of the city that I find peaceful and quiet, and our trees are remarkable. I love the trees, so I've... the trees, so I've really enjoyed that. But if we can create that kind of identity, that it does enhance that sense of belonging to a city. I think it would be a good thing.
Thank you. Maurice Harris.
Thank you for the question. For me, I think it's a multi-level thing with an idea for neighborhoods. I think for me, it's partially a communications tool. You know, as we talk communications tonight, how do we better connect with parts of the city where maybe there's an issue that impacts them directly and not the whole city, not resources and time. So for me, it's really about, you know, bettering ways to connect with residents. Also, in that process, make sure that we're doing it in a way where public input is involved in the process. So we're not coming on high with here this plan, but to make sure that residents are involved in shaping what that looks like as we're going to the Plan Commission and getting public input. And also, for me, it's also a way with police relationships to better connecting with our community service officers, for example, and it kind of really helps with communications and better align the resources so that this is a very beneficial program and not a way of, you know, isolation or feeling like there's a divide in that sense. So, thank you.
Thank you. Sophia Guinness.
Thank you. I support the naming of neighborhoods and having a very robust process to work with the community in the naming and creation and need of our neighborhoods, primarily because it addresses a question that folks asked earlier tonight, which is, how do we hear more from people? How do we be more transparent? And neighborhoods tend to be a really great vehicle to do that. It's a way to communicate. It's a way to connect. And I know there's many neighborhoods in Golden Valley that have amazing connections, but that's not consistent across our community. And so forming neighborhoods is a way to help strengthen those community bonds and really get to know each other. I had the privilege of serving on neighborhood boards for about 10 years, and the way that you can share information, get deeper into city issues, really connect, not just with your block, but kind of your surrounding neighborhood in really meaningful and sustained ways. Neighborhoods also can be very great, like consolidated neighborhoods, like, okay, I know these people, and we want to do something, and we're going to get together, we're going to do it. They can be great vehicles for really pushing things forward. Like, I was super passionate about buckthorn removal and invasive species management, and my neighborhood association ended up being a vehicle to access government in an easier way, which is also important.
Thank you. For our next question, we'll begin with Maurice Harris. "If proposed projects in the citywide referenda are passed, the local city's sales tax of 1.25% will go into effect. However, if bonding is not approved, how would you prioritize the unfunded projects?"
That's a good question. For me, it's not about, for me, the projects, they're important, and we have to fund to ensure we have long-lasting infrastructure for 40 or 50 years. And that's just about making choices that we prioritize about. So for me, it's going to the state for bonding money. Try to patch together as much, at least do smaller projects that could at least enhance the current lifecycle of our buildings that we have, fire or fire or public works, and really look at the budget and figure out if there's money we can take from the budget. A lot of things we fund, though, is important for infrastructure, too. And so for me, it's about what are our options, A, B, C, bonding from the state, B, looking at current funding sources having the city, and maybe if there's room to do it as well. But it'll be a tough decision either way if that's the case.
Thank you. Sophia Guinness.
So the question was about the sales tax passing, correct?
Right.
Yes. So I want to have some real talk with some folks here tonight, is that we have aging public infrastructure, and the sales tax is being proposed because right now it seems like the best way forward. And while there might be other options, they are Plan B. And I just want to be really clear is that there is a cost, no matter what we do. And I'd say a bigger cost is inaction. It's the cost to people. It's a cost to our essential services, and the more we delay, the more expensive things get, and the more urgent these needs become. So, you know, I want a city that has amazing fire service. I want a city that can plow streets quickly. I want a city that's not burdened with unnecessary debt in the future. And so if we don't get, you know, alternative funding sources, we have to think creatively, and it does mean kicking the can further down the road, but I hope we're not in that position.
Thank you. Jean Kidd.
Public safety would be number one for me. The current structure of our public safety, I'm looking long-term for our community. Can we sustain it? Can New Hope, can Crystal, all of us sustain independent organizations? Has that been considered? Are we looking that? We may be looking at consolidation. Are we spending without exploring that option? I love fire service and public safety. That isn't, but is mutual aid in the future for all communities? As participation and volunteerism has gone way down, we're looking at paid departments. That starts to change then, how that is, how we sustain that through our own taxing policies in this. Infrastructure is big. I look at an aging water tower. I look at two reservoirs that are old. How is that going to be sustained, and what was the plan? It was brought up in the land initiative report, and I don't see mention of that. Where are we headed with that, and is that going to be tacked on on top of what has been recommended already for the $105 million? There is fiscal disparity that I haven't seen anybody bring that up, and why we aren't championing for a change in how that's calculated. Can we increase, which I see as an asset, and one of the things that brings, well, I guess I've been asked to stop, to our community, is a robust commercial corridor. And I think we need to look at that as well.
Thank you. Our next question will begin with you, Jean Kidd. "We receive many questions on affordable housing. Please discuss your perspective on how the city should or should not assist in creating more affordable housing."
Affordable housing is always a challenge to me because for me, affordable housing means keeping our homes affordable, taxing people at this current level, and the county is proposing an increase, too. And we're in Hennepin County. It isn't just Golden Valley, it's Hennepin County, and there's a continuing spending of money without consideration whose money it is we're spending, and where's the accountability of that. And I would like to see if we can work with, we paid out, what, $40 million since the year 2001, to fiscal disparity. Where it's average of $8 million a year that is going out of our, what our resources are, that are paid into our city through this funding stream. And I would like to see that reevaluated because I think it's in money that we need. We are an aging city, and without looking at, we already pay in, but we don't, we're not the beneficiary of the taxes that we're already paying. So for me, affordable housing is keeping our housing affordable, increasing our commercial corridor, which is why our city is paying in as much as we do. It is the commercial corridor that pays for it. So I would like to see us increase that, not just bringing in more housing, but bringing in the people that actually allow our city to prosper and make those changes.
Thank you. Maurice Harris.
Excuse me. I definitely, when we discuss affordable housing, it's different things. So keeping our current single-family homes affordable for residents to live in, building more housing in general. As you know, we have a housing shortage in the metro that is inflating costs of housing. And so building additional housing just to have a housing stock is as well. The city in regards to what we've been doing as a city, we've used TIF to help fund for affordable housing, and a couple of projects this past year that are at 70% AMI. Also, for me, it's about keeping our normal housing, our naturally recurring affordable housing, that by working with landlords and developers to ensure that they keep prices in check by giving their property tax breaks for them to keep prices as well. And also, as we discussed fiscal disparities, for me, we've, as a city, had really pounded table with the legislature, with other partners to fix the formula to ensure we keep more revenue here in the city, to fund, to keep private tax low, but also fund infrastructure as well. With affordable housing, it's a very, it's a complex puzzle, but it takes a lot of pieces from single-family homes to building more to help funding for affordable housing, too.
Thank you. Sophia Guinness.
So when I think of the Golden Valley that I want to see in the future, I think about a city that offers robust housing choice that's affordable to a wide variety of people at various stages of life, whether that's somebody that is just finishing school and wants to be in an apartment, to somebody that is wanting to buy their first home and finding something that's actually attainable in the market today, or seniors looking to age in place, or, you know, a townhome, right? Your circumstances change, you want to downsize. And having that robust mix of housing that allows us to stay in the community that we love, wherever we are, and to have our families live here with us. You know, my brothers both work in skilled manufacturing. They make good money, but their income is starting to be such that they can't afford the median household, house in Golden Valley. That's stuff that we need to work on. And while it might take a lot of time to fix local government age or change the fiscal disparities to formula, the city can be really strategic right now in where we invest in our vision, in our projects, and help, whether they're, help projects along the way. And I ran out of time, so there you go.
Thank you. And we'll start with you for the next question, Sophia Guinness. "What suggestions, if any, do you have for Golden Valley's public safety?"
So I've had the privilege of working with really amazing police officers that care deeply about community, that understand good policing methods, and bring really awesome innovation to their jobs. We want those type of police officers in our city. And I think the command staff that we have right now in our city will help attract the kind of officers that can really lead us forward in our policing strategies. And people work for people, and police know where it's good to work. And the fact that you've seen consistent and steady hiring over this summer shows that people are wanting to come to Golden Valley to work. And so I think we're at a place where we really can support our command staff in continuing the practices that they're implementing, whether it's coffee with the cops or chat with the chief, or other community efforts that they have been doing to continue to encourage officers to come and work for our city and stay. Because turnover also has a cost, right? If you're not a great place to work, and you're constantly training people and searching, that's also really difficult. And so having a really strong team helps us ensure that we are able to provide the community safety that folks expect in our community.
Thank you. Jean Kidd.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Sure. "What suggestions, if any, do you have for Golden Valley's public safety?"
I think first and foremost, we have to create an environment where police officers trust the administration. I think it created the problem to begin with, and I think to mend fences, we have to make sure we have strong leadership that they want to follow. When you do public safety, when you're in these kinds of jobs, it's really important who your leaders are. And we may grumble, we may not like what is being proposed, but if we trust that that individual is strong in what they're recommending, we'll follow suit. And we need to make sure that we, as council members, we as leaders in the organization, are those types of people, that we're willing to listen, we're willing to have hard discussions, sometimes rough discussions, but that we're there to support them. And that, but the expectation is, this is our community. This is where you work, and we want our community, the service provided to them respectful, and lawful, and compassionate. So, but you have to be that leadership. You have to provide that for an organization to thrive in public safety.
Thank you. And last, Maurice Harris.
I wish I could say "doh" to both of those, but it would not be allowed. I think when we discuss public safety in the last four years in Golden Valley, it has been a challenge. For me, you know, support for the police is essential in order for them to do their jobs effectively and for the city to be able to provide our services, public safety. So for me, it's about, number one, restaffing the police department, and we've made progress as Councilman Guinness said, to hire really great officers to fill the ranks, also to try to adapt and to put resources to the needs that our officers have. We've added up additional mental health officer and also a social worker that responds to needs, for example, with people with mental health issues, people who may need additional assistance that a police officer can't provide that. And that helps our officers not be on multiple calls, as well as provide the needed resources that that person can be in a safe, welcoming environment. And so for us as a city, as we look at public safety and continue to reform and make it better for everyone, it's always to be listening to our officers of what they need to match those resources with, as well as provide the support and the tools needed to make sure they can do their jobs even better.
Thank you. We'll start with Maurice Harris for the next question. "What is your vision for addressing climate change, both prevention and resiliency to survive increasingly volatile impacts?"
That is a very loaded question. I would say it's, for it's, it's a multi-level stage. I keep saying that. But it takes, you know, local, state, federal. For example, Dakota Ponds is an example mitigation. That took state money, grant money, to help build that project out, which is in the millions of dollars, to ensure that flooding is kept to a minimum. For us, it's about using energy partners with Xcel Energy to help with homeowners, you know, reduce energy usage. It involves us as a city to look at how we use resources to ensure that we're using less energy, but also doing it a way where it recluses our carbon footprint with electric charging stations, our vehicle fleet, as well as working to get grant money to do those projects in a cost-effective way and not add to our budget, to kind of, you know, be more resilient, as well as to try to blunt some of the effects of it. And so I think the work we're doing, being a green step city, it's step five, it's fully shown effort we put in as a city, but we know we have more to do as well. So, you know, it's getting funding, doing those projects, and really kind of make that step to continue what we've been working on for the last decade or more in Golden Valley.
Thank you. Sophia Guinness.
Oh, my goodness. I love this question. I am so passionate about environmental sustainability, and we're at a point in our world where the bottom line, so good governance, saving money, things that people have talked about, and environmental sustainability are like this. So a good city is leading efforts, and Golden Valley has. And so we need to continue that. And Maurice highlighted some of those, so I won't try to repeat things, but it's, there's a lot of really great things. So it's being a green step city, continuing to push that, giving tools to residents to bring sustainability to their homes, continuing to invest in infrastructure that is resilient. You know, as we have bigger storms, right, our stormwater management, our flood mitigation, all become not only things that are good for our watershed, but protect property within our city. Continuing to think of electric vehicles, and the Planning Commission has been working on that in new development, right? So it's not just about government facilities, but about how we build our future. The list could go on and on. I could talk for hours and hours with all of you about it. And actually, if you want to, you can just kind of give me a call, and we can talk about all the things that we should be doing for our city to make it environmentally sustainable. But it's really down to the simple things, too, right? Like putting a pollinator garden in your yard, making sure our buildings run efficiently. I mean, you can reduce the energy consumption of a building by 30% by just having a good engineer looking at all the stuff. And so that is ways that we can both keep our budget in check, and I got to stop talking. Ah!
Thank you. Jean Kidd.
Well, that's a hard act to follow. For me, I guess I'm dialed down. I'm a little more on the, not quite on the level as she is because I'm not as educated in the topic as she is. But what I do, and what I think the city can do, tree cover is always really important. When we lost a lot of trees in Minneapolis, they put a price of about $1,500 per tree as value of city add. So that certainly would be something that, you know, the average citizen can do. And then what's been brought up when I've been out walking is the garbage hauling. I lived in Minneapolis. We paid our utility bill. The garbage came. It picked up. We didn't think anything of it. up, we didn't think anything of it. Then I was asked, well, what do I think of this? And it moved over to Golden Valley, and I was like, oh, my God, I have to, like, find a hauler and do all of this. And I didn't, I, 30 years, I didn't have to think about it. So I learned to adjust, I got a hauler, I did all that. But I do see, you know, and put that maybe to the vote of the city. I think there's a lot of truck traffic on it, but if people want to continue to have individual haulers, then that's the choice that you get to make. And we're here to listen to that. As, as a government, we're not here to just enforce our viewpoint on you. But also, you know, maybe we need to go to a single hauler. Those are just some bigger steps that we could take that might help the city. But I, once again, I think it's up to the citizens to decide what they want to do on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On to a new topic, and we'll begin with Jean Kidd. There used to be a number of city-sponsored events, such as Golden Valley Days. Do you think a large city event is worthy of support? Why or why not?
I do. You know what I've been struck with is the lack of art in Golden Valley. I'm like, wow, we have no art. Where is it? Where is it? And we have, you know, a performing arts school right over in Purbridge Center. And I'm thinking, I don't, I wish we would see more art, whether it's, you know, sidewalk chalk days, and we have food trucks, and we have things like that that bring in murals. If you go down to Florida, there's communities that have murals on every building. And we, there's just seems to be some of those festivals that I think would be really a draw for the community, for the businesses. And why not some food festivals that bring in a variety of things out here? We definitely have parking lots in Golden Valley that could sustain that. But I would like to see some festivals that are, that are fun. People could come and enjoy, and I've seen some great ones in different communities that I think would be a great draw. So yes, I think it's a great way to showcase your city and your citizens.
Thank you. Maurice Harris.
I think it's a great idea as well. I know in the past, we had the Arts and Music Festival, for example, that, that kind of went away because there was not enough volunteers to help staff that. One thing I think the city has been trying to is find better ways to work at Golden Valley Community Foundation, to ensure that we could bring some kind of program back. But the issue is about funding, and whether this should be in a budget, budget line item. But to be creative about how we work with that. So we're a corporate, we're a corporate community, General Mills Secretary here, Allianz, Pentair. We do have a very healthy corporate government, corporate base here, that I think, as we work as a council and determine, how do we fund this, number one, and how do we make it sustainable, where it's not to a group of volunteers who do it for five years, and then they get tired because it's a lot of work, to make sure it's sustainable for a long term. Because it does help with building community, it does help with bringing everyone together as well. I missed doing the parade a few years ago. It was a fun time. But also, I think we, it's a thing that's important, and just, you know, for me, it's how do we pay for it? How do we ensure we have a good group of volunteers to keep that going over a long term, as well as sharing that it's a viable product to do? Because festivals are great, but it takes a lot of effort, a lot of money, and a lot of time to keep it going.
Thank you. Sophia Guinness.
Who doesn't like some great events? I think we can all probably agree in this room that community events that target different ages and interests of folks, whether that's younger kids, seniors and adults, or teens, are important to our city. The question is just how. And I'm going to use a slightly fancy term, which is cross-sector collaboration. Basically, that is where you lean into your business community, you lean into your nonprofit community, you lean into all the wonderful people sitting in this room right here, the citizens of Golden Valley, to really, to really create and sustain programming for our city. Some of that can come from city budget, but to, I think, really capture that vision, it's more about putting the structure together that instigates people doing amazing things in our community, and finding those places where we can have partnership. And, you know, we had, COVID kind of, kind of made things go, blah, blah, blah. And so we're at a place right now where we can really think and rethink about building what we need. And as a, as a parent of a slightly young child, who's now kind of a kid, oh, my goodness, how did that happen? The, I'm really interested in the kind of program, community program that also speaks to young families, and to families with those slightly older kids, right? Like teens, we, fostering teens, and giving them a place to really begin to engage civically, and to connect with community volunteerism, and kind of, you know, own some of these activities and arts.
Thank you. We'll begin with Sophia Guinness for the next question. What suggestions do you have for the city's budget in order to minimize property tax increases?
So the budget, and I think right now, is a very delicate dance. And when you, this is my first budget cycle, being appointed to the council, and so I dug in, right? I wanted to look at all the details, I printed it all out, I went line through line, I asked a whole bunch of questions. And what I was trying to get to is, what, what do we need to do? What do we, and what should we do? And what would we like to do? And really understand those components of our budget. And I do have to give staff kudos. We have some really awesome financial staff that really think about the business operations of this city, and put that in our budget. And so, just pin that over there. But we are at a place in our city where staff make up a good portion of our budget. And when I talk to residents, people tell me, I want these services, I want these people, I want you to do more. So I look at staff, I'm like, okay, who would we cut? Doesn't make sense, right? We would be cutting services. And then we have a city that has, is starting to have aging infrastructure. We need to plan carefully and sustainably to take care of those pieces. So, that's a long way of saying, before I run out of time, we, it's a balance between maintaining the things we love and cherish, not kicking the can to the future where it becomes emergencies, or becomes more expensive, but also realizing that from year to year, you can only do so much. And it is, it is a little bit. And finding that beautiful dance, we are able to do as much as you can without overburdening residents.
Thank you. Jean Kidd.
Well, budgets are always challenging. But I think, for me, it's, how do we lay out a plan for you, the citizens, to be able to look at? And, and I think there needs to be, in a council meeting, a structure, like, these are the things we're going to talk about and review every year at this point in time. And so that you can see what's on the table and under consideration for that moment. I think that's, where are we headed? Where are we going? And people don't want to page through a 50-page report. They want to see succinctly, here it is, this is what we're going to discuss on any given day, this is what needs to be replaced in this amount of time, these are the considerations that we have to make. We would like your participation in that, but we're going to have to make some tough decisions. Some are going to get fixed, and some are not. Because you, you know, there is only, there's 23,000 people paying for this town. That's it. So it isn't, it's nice to have a huge budget, but that isn't the case here. So if we're going to maintain it so we can afford to live here, we're going to have to make some tough decisions, or maybe more modest decisions on what we do replace, and the schedule in which we do it. So, but it always seems all at once, or not at all. So I would like it to seem more balanced, and certainly more transparent, so that you guys can all step in at any given time and say, okay, we're going to discuss sewers in this meeting, or we're going to discuss water in this meeting. So.
Thank you. Maurice Harris.
Budgets are hard, as the understatement of the night. For me, it's about priorities of, we need to provide services that people depend on and expect from the city, looking at how many employees do we have to provide those services and employees, and try to make that tough decision. Last year, I voted for 11% levy, and it made me sick to my stomach. Something that I don't want to do, because it's a burden to our residents. But at the same time, the priorities we had on, when you look at ensuring that we have adequate street repair, for example, with additional employee, or ensuring that we pay down our debt, or we try to put money aside for, for a building fund, a sewer fund, so that wouldn't cost down the road as well. And so, make those priorities, and try and get input from residents. I do, I sit at Lunds and Barley's once a month on a Saturday from 9:11 a.m. to hear residents' concerns. Because I want to make sure we're making the right decision, we'll get budgeting, that we're taking in input to try to make the best decisions possible. And so for me, the rate we're doing with our property tax, it's unsustainable. And that involves looking at structurally of how do we make those choices, but also looking at, also pushing where we can get local government aid, for example. We have not received local government aid in years. Or fiscal disparities, I know, that's a long-term goal, but it's things we have to really start pushing, in order to try to put some sanity how we do in these budgets. Because I'm not voting for 11% increase. I'm not. And I'll stop there.
Thank you. Our next question will begin with Maurice Harris. So you're probably out door knocking right now, and getting to meet everybody and talk to them. So this question refers to, after the election, how will you, as a council member, better communicate with and involve residents? Start with Maurice Harris.
Door knocking is fun. It's really fun, and enjoying conversations. I think I just mentioned, one of the things I kind of did when I got elected was doing office hours. It was my way of, come by, any concern, any question you have, and I'll listen, and try to have a conversation, and try to take information to come back. I say on the doors a lot, I don't know everything. The people who elected me have opinions, and I want to make sure that we're involved in the process. And so for me, it's always try to be out available to talk to residents about anything. You know, working a full-time job in, you know, Minneapolis, it's, you know, I've come back in for a cup of coffee to talk to residents, I'll meet them where they're at, and try to make myself as available as possible to make sure that they know that someone's listening to them, and someone cares about what their concerns are. And so I think for me, it's, I'll still do office hours, even if I have a kid, which, that'll make it a little more complex. But my goal is to be available to residents, to listen to them. That's, I feel like that's my number one job as a council member, is to do that. And, you know, I say, we may not agree on everything, but for me, it's to make sure that, that I'm available to you. That's my number one job in, as a council member.
Thank you. Sophia Guinness.
So, one of the lines that I love to use all the time is, invite me out, invite me to your stuff, I will come. The, just being there and being responsive to our community, and making it easy for you to find me, is something that I'm always willing. So, in addition to what I might do, right, is that open invitation, that if you want me at your neighborhood event, if you want me just to come and sit in your driveway and chat with you, chat with you for a little bit about city issues, reach out and schedule something with me. I want to be an accessible, available person. With that, you know, I'm kind of in this process of kind of finding my, my things, right? And, and one of, one of the things that I really want to continue post-election, is that some of my meeting greets have been really kind of family-focused, because I have a, I have a small child. And so it was, you know, doing kind of like, there were, kind of being available, right, sitting in a park with my kid there as well, and inviting people to come and talk to me. And I would like to continue doing stuff like that. And maybe in the winter, you go inside at Brookview and hang out in the playplace, and then, you know, people, people can come and talk, whatever. I also really want to continue to push the city's communications. In my day job, I think about ways to make information more accessible, and whether that's working with CCX to have more kind of short clip videos that really explain to residents what we've done. I hope to work with, with staff and kind of push my own initiatives in the years to come to, to increase the participation.
Thank you. Jean Kidd.
Well, they have experience. They're, they're in the current office. For me, hopefully after that, the election, I'll be in a position where I'm absolutely accessible. I enjoy communicating with people. It's a job that I've done for a long time, mostly at their worst time, not necessarily their best time. But I love to listen to what people have to say, whether it's positive or negative. I enjoy the dialogue that goes on with that, and the ability to learn some new things and a new point of view. I think that's probably the thing I enjoy most about interacting with people, is when their viewpoint is different from mine. It's just such an opportunity to experience life in a different way, and, and from a different perspective. So, whatever is available as a city council member, I'm assuming there's emails, and there's different things, whether it's Zoom meetings, or going out and being invited to different events in, in the community. Absolutely love to go out and meet that. So, that would be driven by me, as far as just, I could be available, much like Maurice, I think is, that's a really wonderful thing that he does. But if other people have events or something, I certainly want them to feel that I would be, make myself available for that. So, thank you.
All right. We're going to cut back your response time to one minute, and squeeze two more questions in, instead of just one. So we will begin with Jean Kidd. One minute, timekeepers. What changes, if any, in policy or actions would you suggest the city council make if you are elected or reelected?
For me, it would be a review of current policy and procedure. I've read some of the documents, and I know that some of them need to be revisited to make sure that they're current, and they reflect the current standards that are put out. That's always hard. It's always hard to revisit those documents. They're dull, they're dry, and, but very necessary to make sure that they're appropriate and current. For policies, I think that's, that's really where I would start, is just a general review of all of that. And that would take time. It takes staffing, it takes time to read it, and making sure that people who are there that can offer good advice on the appropriateness and the effectiveness are at the table as well.
Thank you. Maurice Harris.
I would think part of it is looking at how we, as a member of, operating the city, but also look at how we do certain procedures, such as when you look at new development. Example is, right now, our Plan Commission is looking at a new process to actually have paperwork file when a, when applicant for a development project comes through. So, number one, it's on paper, it's transparent, it's available, and that the process can show a start and finish. I think a lot of residents, as mentioned to me, where it's like, they see a development project come from the sky, and it kind of falls out, even though there's been a year or two legwork. But having that paperwork available to see, okay, here's this new development coming in front for us, for review, helps that. As well, I want to push a sketch plan review. I know at Dyna does that, where they can see a sketch of the idea of a development, get input from Plan Commission and from City Council, so people understand what's happening, and not be surprised at all. So that's an example when we kind of look at those policies, procedures that we want to update, change.
Thank you. Sophia Guinness.
So, I'll try to do this really fast. So, there's many, many areas of interest, and to kind of try to sum them down into a minute, thinking about how to push the accessibility and transparency of communications, and allowing for more engagement. So thinking earlier in process, is kind of letting know folks more about what's being considered, and inviting more participation when plans aren't as solid or being more formed. So continuing to innovate in that way. I'm really interested in continuing to put, push environmental initiatives, especially where they save us money. For example, thinking about how much lighting we have, or the pavement, and all that, all that kind of stuff, as well as really making sure that we're thinking about the economic development potential of our city. I want, in 30 years from now, a downtown that is really a downtown, that, that we love and have many awesome businesses, and we continue to grow that. So really thinking about the strategic needs of our city.
Thank you. And this is the last question, and we'll start with Sophia Guinness, and I think she's going to continue on with her thought. Please articulate your vision for Golden Valley and your goals to move the community forward.
So that's a great segue, right, into thinking about a downtown, and really having an economic development plan for our city, I think, is really important, and something that we've really started to move, move, move towards. You know, we have a lot of opportunities in our downtown, especially as we think about opening up space from some of our public work facilities, to really make this space more transit-accessible, walkable, and vibrant. And, you know, if you think about, like, why do you move to a community? What brings you here? What makes you want to stay here? It is those things that make Golden Valley special. The look, the feel of our city, the community connections, the services, and really leaning into that vision, and really lifting up people's voices, and helping to create that. You know, it's not, it's not fun to just sit, sit and worry, right? If we bring folks out and give them ways to really engage in community, we also strengthen our, our bonds. And, and I have to stop talking.
Yeah, we only have one minute each. Jean Kidd.
For me, what I would like to see, people talk about creating a downtown here. We have existing buildings here. We talk about We talk about spending more, replacing these buildings, and, and I think we have a great little hall or a little corridor of buildings here. I would hope that if, if I'm not elected and the projects move forward with the bonding, that these buildings remain. I think we don't have, if you go over into St. Louis Park and Robinsdale, they have older buildings, smaller buildings that small businesses can move into. It isn't necessarily building a six-story residential structure with commercial on the bottom. They could never afford those buildings. They can't move into them. Artists can't move into them and small businesses. So I would hope this could be reformed with these buildings, existing structures, to create a really vibrant little corridor of buildings that would be fascinating and sexy and fun to go out to. So I hope it isn't just raise this. If I don't make it, I hope you guys get that.
Thank you. And last, Maurice Harris.
For me, would vision, for me, it's about sustainable, sustaining this community for the long term. For me, it's about how the city looks in 30 or 40 years to make sure that this community is vibrant. I'm big on economic development. It's my, went to grad school for it, I've worked in it. And for me, it's ensure that, for example, jobs that people can easily access to that pay well. Always thinking of, you know, kind of big picture of, you know, economy is not the factor that states are forever, but it's about always ensuring that opportunities are available for people. And that kind of builds together with good housing, good infrastructure. And for me, at the end of the day, when I walk away in four years, my vision for this place is to be a community that continues to be always, you know, doing innovative things and making sure that city is vibrant, is growing, is welcoming to all, and ensure that, you know, people who live, who come here 50 years later, it's the same great place that they live, that their parents or grandparents were 50 years ago.
Thank you. It is now time for closing statements. Each candidate will have one minute to conclude, and we will go in the reverse order of opening, so we'll begin with Jean Kidd.
Well, I want to thank everybody for coming. I watched the 2013 League of Women Voters meeting, and to see the difference in, in where we are as, as people and a community in a decade has been, was really stark for me. And so to have an opportunity to participate in this process, I think I'm a pragmatic, problem-solving kind of person, frugal, and I would like to be involved in this process so that I can help with the things that I do well. Planning and, and come up with something that I think is more citizen-based and not just something that we just talk about, but never really put into action. And I have good follow-through. So I would like to see a better, a plan. I don't want to say better, because people work really hard here, but I think there's a way to set it up so that it does move forward. And I have to stop. Thanks, you guys, for letting me come and be a part of this. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Maurice Harris.
Thank you so much for, for attending and for watching on TV, and the League of Women Voters for organizing this. It's, for me, at the end of the day, it's about what can I do better for this community and leave it a better place than I left, than I came into. And so the work over the last four years is kind of doing those building pieces with the HRA, for example, to get a staff person to kind of focus on housing. We look at environment, ensuring with green steps and looking at policies, procedures, how do we make this a better, greener community? And with public safety, to make a public, to have a police department and fire department that respond, that gets great response and is also adapting to times that we are in right now. And so hopefully, if you decide to reelect me for the next four years, to continue that work, but also continue to have people involved in the process, because that's very vital. If we don't have your support, we can't do anything. And so, you know, I'll see you on the doors in another month left, and thank you so much for listening, and thank you.
Thank you. Sophia Guinness.
Thank you to our hosts and to all of you for giving your time tonight to engage in the civil, civic process. I hope I gained your support, and I look forward to working with all of you to shape the future of our beloved city. I believe the strength of our democracy starts at the local level. By creating connected, vibrant, sustainable, and welcoming communities, we set the expectation for how government should function. I want to see a Golden Valley with a secure foundation, and that is why I'm committed to maintaining our municipal infrastructure, building relationships to uphold public safety, leaning into sustainability, ensuring, and ensuring our budget is designed to deliver excellent services that Golden Valley desires while not overburdening people. I have committed my life to the public process and elevating communities' voice in government decision-making, partnering across government, business, and nonprofit to improve the public good. As a newer member of our community, I hope I have allowed you to get to know me better. If you need to learn more, you can contact me, or, or you can visit sophia-ginnis.org.
Please join me in a round of applause to thank the candidates. Thank the candidates, the audience here and at home, and CCX Media Northwest Community Television for recording this forum. Now we will hear from the Golden Valley Voter Service Chair, Jackie Wells, with closing comments.
Thank you, Peggy. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Golden Valley, I thank the candidates for Golden Valley Mayor and City Council for answering your questions tonight. And a very special thank you to Peggy Cavam of the League of Women Voters, Minnetonka Eden Prairie Hopkins for moderating our forum. We hope this forum has helped the audience here and at home to make an informed decision, and we're very grateful for this in-person audience. Many thanks to CCX Media Northwest Community Television for recording our forum, and we are grateful to the city of Golden Valley for allowing us the use of the city council chambers. The forum recording will be available at ccxmedia.org and our League of Women Voters Golden Valley Facebook page in a day or two. You may also find more information on the candidates at the National League of Women Voters website, which is vote411.org. You simply input your address on the homepage, and then all the races that'll be on your ballot pop up, and you'll see candidates' responses to a variety of questions. And I'm very thankful that all five of our candidates here did respond to our questions. Please feel free to stay for a few minutes to chat with the candidates if you'd like. Early voting is open at Golden Valley City Hall in this room during regular business hours through November 6th plus on Saturday, November 4th. You may also request an absentee ballot be mailed to you. If you need one of those, I've got an application in the hallway. Again, the general election is on November 7th, so let's again thank our candidates and our moderator, and have a lovely evening, folks.